My Brother's Keeper, or MBK, is a mentoring program that provides support to young men at home, school, and in the community, enabling them to have clear pathways to opportunity. The vision is to train young men to become productive, educated, and well-respected members of our society who graduate from high school prepared for college admissions, trade school, the military, or the workforce. The Ferguson Florescent School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than 10,000 students from preschool through 12th grade with an excellent comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson Florescent School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second-grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth-grade centers, three middle schools including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and NCA-CASI accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and the STEAM High School focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News and World reported named STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top 12% of high schools in Missouri and in the top 35% of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, AVID, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of FFSD students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness and has increased the four-year graduation rate to 93%. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district includes a nationally-recognized early education program, the award-winning Challenger Learning Center Space Education Facility, and the Little Creek Nature Area, a 97-acre nature preserve that offers experiential learning opportunities for students in science, biology, ecology, and related areas of study. Through our partnership with Varsity Tutors, all students and teachers will have access to live tutors on demand. The district has also transformed alternative education with the Restoration and Wellness Center. Recognizing that well-being is vital for academic success, the district prioritizes the health and social-emotional well-being of its students and staff. The district has a partnership with Hazel Health that offers comprehensive healthcare and teletherapy services, ensuring that students have access to medical care and mental health support during the school day. Additionally, Ferg Floor Care Health Clinic provides free healthcare services to district employees, demonstrating the district's commitment to the well-being of its faculty and staff. The Board of Education has made equity a priority in the Ferguson Florescent School District. In 2018, the board adopted an equity resolution, and between 2020 and 2022, the district examined inequities and racism in policies and practices culminating in the board's adoption of the Ferguson Florescent School District's anti-racist standards for social justice in anti-racist schools. From early childhood education to advanced scientific exploration, from personalized learning opportunities to comprehensive healthcare services, the Ferguson Florescent School District continues to lead the way in providing an exceptional educational experience that truly is providing equity and access for all. My Brother's Keeper, or MBK, is a mentoring program that provides support to young men at home, school, and in the community, enabling them to have clear pathways to opportunity. The vision is to train young men to become productive, educated, and well-respected members of our society who graduate from high school prepared for college admissions, trade school, the military, or the workforce. The Ferguson Florescent School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than 10,000 students from preschool through 12th grade with an excellent comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson Florescent School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second-grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth-grade centers, three middle schools including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and NCA-CASI accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and the STEAM High School focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News and World reported named STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top 12% of high schools in Missouri and in the top 35% of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, AVID, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of FFSD students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness and has increased the four-year graduation rate to 93%. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district includes a nationally-recognized early education program, the award-winning Challenger Learning Center Space Education Facility, and the Little Creek Nature Area, a 97-acre nature preserve that offers experiential learning opportunities for students in science, biology, ecology, and related areas of study. Through our partnership with Varsity Tutors, all students and teachers will have access to live tutors on demand. The district has also transformed alternative education with the Restoration and Wellness Center. Recognizing that well-being is vital for academic success, the district prioritizes the health and social-emotional well-being of its students and staff. The district has a partnership with Hazel Health that offers comprehensive healthcare and teletherapy services, ensuring that students have access to medical care and mental health support during the school day. Additionally, Ferg Floor Care Health Clinic provides free healthcare services to district employees, demonstrating the district's commitment to the well-being of its faculty and staff. The Board of Education has made equity a priority in the Ferguson Florescent School District. In 2018, the board adopted an equity resolution, and between 2020 and 2022, the district examined inequities and racism in policies and practices culminating in the board's adoption of the Ferguson Florescent School District's anti-racist standards for social justice in anti-racist schools. From early childhood education to advanced scientific exploration, from personalized learning opportunities to comprehensive healthcare services, the Ferguson Florescent School District continues to lead the way in providing an exceptional educational experience that truly is providing equity and access for all. My Brother's Keeper, or MBK, is a mentoring program that provides support to young men at home, school, and in the community, enabling them to have clear pathways to opportunity. The vision is to train young men to become productive, educated, and well-respected members of our society who graduate from high school prepared for college admissions, trade school, the military, or the workforce. The Ferguson Florescent School District located in suburban St. Louis serves more than 10,000 students from preschool through 12th grade with an excellent comprehensive educational program. Fully accredited by the state of Missouri, the Ferguson Florescent School District operates seven pre-kindergarten through second-grade schools, six intermediate schools, two sixth-grade centers, three middle schools including a cutting-edge STEAM middle school which was ranked the number-two school in Missouri this year, two A-plus and NCA-CASI accredited high schools, the Innovation High School, a big-picture learning school, and the STEAM High School focused on preparing students in fields including science, technology, and engineering. In August, U.S. News and World reported named STEAM Academy at McClure South Berkeley High School as one of the best high schools in America, placing the school in the top 12% of high schools in Missouri and in the top 35% of high schools nationally. As a district leading the charge in high school transformation, there are a lot of pathways to success. All of our high schools are Project Lead the Way schools. We offer many programs and opportunities such as dual enrollment, dual credit, international baccalaureate, AVID, and Elevate St. Louis. Our Redtail Cadet program has also secured private pilot's licenses for students before they even graduate. The number of FFSD students enrolled in advanced placement courses has also dramatically increased. The district has intentionally focused on college and career readiness and has increased the four-year graduation rate to 93%. Besides the secondary school coursework, the district ensured opportunities for each population of students in an effort to support the goal of college readiness. In addition, the district includes a nationally-recognized early education program, the award-winning Challenger Learning Center Space Education Facility, and the Little Creek Nature Area, a 97-acre nature preserve that offers experiential learning opportunities for students in science, biology, ecology, and related areas of study. Through our partnership with Varsity Tutors, all students and teachers will have access to live tutors on demand. The district has also transformed alternative education with the Restoration and Wellness Center. Recognizing that well-being is vital for academic success, the district prioritizes the health and social-emotional well-being of its students and staff. The district has a partnership with Hazel Health that offers comprehensive healthcare and teletherapy services, ensuring that students have access to medical care and mental health support during the school day. Additionally, Ferg Floor Care Health Clinic provides free healthcare services to district employees, demonstrating the district's commitment to the well-being of its faculty and staff. The Board of Education has made equity a priority in the Ferguson Florescent School District. In 2018, the board adopted an equity resolution, and between 2020 and 2022, the district examined inequities and racism in policies and practices culminating in the board's adoption of the Ferguson Florescent School District's anti-racist standards for social justice in anti-racist schools. From early childhood education to advanced scientific exploration, from personalized learning opportunities to comprehensive healthcare services, the Ferguson Florescent School District continues to lead the way in providing an exceptional educational experience that truly is providing equity and access for all.
Once again, thank everyone for being here tonight. Under the provisions of the Public Meeting Law of the State of Missouri, the board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes the time, date, place, the tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice of this agenda for this meeting was posted on Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at the Administration Center, 8855 Dunn Road, Hazewood, Missouri. At the same time, copies of this notice and agenda were sent to major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities and schools in the district, and posted on the district website. May I get a recommendation to adopt the agenda?
I've moved to adopt the agenda with the deletion of item number seven.
Call for the vote?
Second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Second. Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Tyson? Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Assistant Secretary votes yes. Dr. Graves?
Yes. This next portion of the meeting is allocated to show a short video from the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest to board members and the community.
Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the 2023 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with MASA and MOASBO. This year's event was once again held in Kansas City. MSBA President Ruth Johnson got the conference off to a great start during the first general session. During her remarks, she shared the story of her transformative journey through public education and how school board members make journeys like hers possible.
Each of you, as passionate members of your local school boards, holds a key to that transformation for your students. Your belief in their potential, regardless of their background, can change the course of their entire lives. You possess the ability to pave the way for brighter futures, offering hope and opportunities where none seem to exist. Education is the great equalizer, breaking down the walls that social and economic hardships build. It provides a platform for dreams to flourish, talents to be nurtured, and potentials to be realized. As members of the school board, we are the gatekeepers of this transformative power, able to shape educational policies and programs that level the playing field and other genuine opportunities for all.
ABC News veteran and creator and host of What Would You Do?, John Quinones, was the keynote speaker for the second general session of the conference. His presentation detailed his odds-defying journey and celebrated the life-changing power of education.
Yes, today, I wouldn't be the man I am today had it not been for the education I received in public school and then in college at a time when all the odds were stacked against me. And then along came my first hero besides my mother and father, and it was my English teacher, my English teacher, Mrs. Gutierrez, in 10th grade at Brackenridge High School. When everyone else had told me, "You're not college material, you know, no one in your family's ever gone to college, you speak with a funny accent, you don't have any money, your grades aren't all that great." When those teachers, you know, what gives you the audacity, John Quinones, to think you can go to college? When those teachers told me that, my high school English teacher, Mrs. Gutierrez, did the opposite. She said, "Johnny, I love the way you write your essays in English class, I love the way you tell stories. Have you thought about journalism?"
Missouri's 2024 Teacher of the Year Greg Kester spoke during the conference's third general session and banquet. Kester is a social studies teacher at Petosi High School in the Petosi R3 School District. He said that when people wonder about the status of our state and nation, the answers we are looking for are right in front of us.
The test of a nation's status is the quality of its citizenry. And I have good news. My country is full of good, quality citizens. I'm staring at a group of good, quality people right now, and I can prove it. What do you call a person who runs for an elected office that does not pay? Now, that sounds like a school board member, but at the core, it is really just a quality person. The key attribute to the best quality people is not their patience, not their ability to forgive the eternally unhappy, but their capacity to love and to serve. It is easy to love one's spouse, one's family, one's friend, and one's neighbor. The capacity to love and serve in this instance in which I speak is love for what I refer to as the generalized other, which is much more difficult. The generalized other is the person that you may never meet, the person whose name you will never know, or the kid attending your school district that you will never see. It is this ability to love and serve that is required of elected school board members every day. This love and service is a reflection of people of quality and citizens of virtue. These are the people who run for an office, not to build a resume, not for personal gain, but to serve their neighbor, their community, and the children in their local public school. It is a great thing, this thing we call public service.
In addition to the outstanding general sessions, the conference featured more than 70 concurrent sessions on a wide range of topics, Missouri's premier education trade show, the Education Expo, MSBA's student showcase of public school programs, and much more. MSBA's
MSBA's Delegate Assembly also met in conjunction with the annual conference to establish the position statements that will guide advocacy work throughout the coming year. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thank you for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and thank you for your dedication and the amazing work you've done throughout all of 2023 to ensure all students succeed. We'll see you again in January of 2024 for the next MSBA Board Report.
All right, the next portion of our agenda is the Declaration of Independence. This is for information. Ferguson-Floreson residents interested in running for the April 2, 2024 Ferguson-Floreson Board of Education election will need to file for candidacy at the Ferguson-Floreson District Office located at 8855 Dunn Road, Hazelwood, Missouri 63042. The filing period for the April 2 election opened on Tuesday, December 5 and closes at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, December 26. The district office will be closed on December 25, 2023. Two positions will be on ballot as the three-year terms of Courtney Graves and Terry Tyson will expire in April 2024. Missouri law requires a person to be a U.S. citizen, at least 24 years old, a resident taxpayer of the district, and to have resided in Missouri for one year immediately preceding the election. Board candidates must not be delinquent in paying state income taxes, personal property taxes, multiple taxes of real estate, property taxes, or on their place of residence. Board members serve three-year terms and are not paid for their service. Candidates will receive an information packet after filing for the election. Those interested in filing should contact Jacqueline McWell, Ferguson-Floreson's Board of Education Secretary, at 314-687-1912, or JMCWELL@FERGEORG. In addition, the candidate must follow these procedures. One, file a declaration of candidacy. Two, file pursuant to District Policy 4013. The Ferguson-Floreson School District Board Election in April 2024 will be conducted by cumulative voting, a changed order by the federal court. In cumulative voting, voters cast as many votes as there are seats. Voters are not limited to giving only one vote to a candidate. Instead, they can give their votes to one or more candidates. For instance, in the election for two open board seats, voters could choose to give one vote each to two different candidates, one vote to one, and one vote to another candidate, or two votes to a single candidate. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Dr. Graves. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to take an opportunity, I think it's apropos with us talking about board candidates. The Board passed a policy where we will have a student board member. So Dr. Bland, along with her team, Charlie Moore, and many others, went through a rigorous process after adopting the policy, having an election within our school district. I'm happy to say that we have elected, our student body has elected a new student board member. She's here with us this evening. Ms. Leilani Billups, please stand. Give her a round of applause. Leilani is a junior at Steam High School, doing extremely well in school academically, just a brilliant young lady. She'll be Secretary of Education or probably president one day. But we're really excited about having her on the board. She'll join us in January at our January board meeting. We will have full installation. I'll swear her in, and we'll have a ceremony to celebrate her as the new student board member. But this is pretty huge. States across the country, Maryland in particular, has this as a part of their statute. So we are pioneers in this way in Missouri at sitting a student board member. So we're really excited to have her on board, and let's give her another round of applause.
All right. This portion of our meeting, the Board allocates to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. The Board President will read aloud any comments that have previously been submitted. While all the comments will be included in the board materials this evening and may be found under public comments, the Board may limit the number of comments read aloud based on the length of repetition. Prior to the public comment period, in-person participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the Board are requested to speak from the podium. Identify themselves, and keeping with District Policies 4054, 4059, and personnel law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the Board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the Board President may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. Responses to the public comments can be found in Meetings and Agenda section of the district website within 14 days of the meeting. And so we will have our first person to the podium, and that is Ms. Tawana Moore, and she will be speaking about Agenda Item 3041 and Student Discipline, Admin Authority, and Communication Between School and Parents. Ms. Moore? Okay, I'm just going to hold this, and then I'll go back. Next, we'll have Michaela Stewart, who is a McClure North alum, and 2024 prom she will be discussing.
I brought paper for everybody, that's why I can't give you. Okay, hello, everyone. My name is Michaela Stewart. I am the owner of SBK Beauty Palace. I graduated from McClure North in class of 2020. I have everything on my phone, so that's why I'm looking at it. I'm a business owner. I offer beauty services to many women around the St. Louis area. I offer a variety of hairstyles, and I sell hair extensions and other beauty products. I was vice president of Student Council when I was a freshman. But today I come to you all because I would like to work with Ferguson-Floreson School District to offer one senior from each high school a free prom makeover. The giveaway would include her nails and makeup provided by some of the best beauty professionals in St. Louis. Last year, I was able to, well, this past school year, I was able to pick three girls from McClure North to give them a wonderful prom experience. My goal with this giveaway is to stay connected to the community while also giving back, and also to push kids to achieve behaviorally and academically in school by giving them something to work hard for. I want to continue this work with all schools to offer more than just a prom giveaway. I want this to be bigger than just one district. Eventually, I want to be able to help all schools and give every student help, including but not limited to homecoming giveaways, classes for students, hosting back-to-school pop-up shops, and more every school year. With this giveaway, I will need to work side by side with each school to offer the best outcome for the giveaway. This includes being able to go to each school and promote by having an assembly for the class of 2024 females to introduce myself and the other beauty professionals and get them excited about the giveaway. I'll also need the schools to help with promoting by on social media, discussing daily on the morning announcements, emailing parents, and having an open line of communication for me so that it's a smooth outcome. The requirements for this giveaway for the students will be a 2.5 GPA or higher, no suspensions, and they will have to write a full-page essay about what beauty means to them, and they will have to tell me about themselves and how this giveaway will help them. My reason for doing this giveaway is because when I graduated in class of 2020, my senior class didn't get to have a prom. Remembering how hard it was for us, I think about the children who do have prom and aren't financially able to attend, and also the children who work hard and go above and beyond in school. These children deserve as much help as possible, so I would love to lighten the burden on at least a few families for their prom day.
Thank you so much, Michaela.
Thank you.
And Brent Mitchell will be getting back in touch with you to kind of help you coordinate some of that. You're so welcome. Thank you again, Michaela. This next one is titled Food for Thought, and this will be Wesley, Ms. Wesley Stewart.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy holidays. Most of the time I come and I have this prepared statement, and today I decided that I would come and speak from my heart. A long time ago, I sat at a table with my coworkers, and you know what teachers do? We talk about how the day is going, and we had a long day. And one of my favorite teachers, she said, well, Reka, it's okay. We all in the same boat. We doing this together. I've come to a point where I do know, I no longer take solace in knowing that we're sharing certain burdens, okay? It's one thing when we're rolling together and we're trying to make changes. And I know we talk all the time that there are things happening all over this country and in many districts. But we also know that there are places where there are certain things that aren't happening, and they look just like us. You all came to our school, and we talked about that pyramid, that structure, and what needs to happen. And my food for thought is, as you all move forward and make decisions for next semester and every year, please consider reflecting on that pyramid, where that safety is on the bottom, where we can't function unless we're safe, where the district policies are built a certain way, so that then what? Those building policies can do the same, and so that classroom policies can go, so that teachers can have certain management. Because at the end of the day, I know for a fact that this district wants highly qualified and masterful teachers. But we cannot do certain things if we don't feel and can't embrace a certain way. We cannot continue to build on a foundation that is put together with twisty ties and duct tape. We have to find brick and submit and make a strong foundation. I don't question your intent, and I don't believe that we are malicious in anything that we do, because I know that we all put children first. I know that for a fact. But these past days, I have questioned my place as a teacher and if I am effective anymore, if I should continue in this path. Because just as we want highly qualified teachers, I got to have some students that want to learn. A good friend told me that if there is no structure, there is no learning. And while I try to create structure so that I can teach, I also want my students to embrace and learn what I'm trying to do. I want every day as we move forward to just always reflect on that. If you want academic discourse, if you want no-nonsense nurturing, if you want that seven mind steps, at the bottom of the pyramid, that safety must be in place. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Dr. Davis will be getting back with you. We next will have Timothy Cornell, and he's talking about high school pay, I believe.
Good evening to all, and all good evening as well. Hello, my name is Timothy Cornell. I'm at Innovation High School here, custodian. And I don't know if this is important or maybe not, maybe so, but it's important to me because I'm wondering why I still haven't got my high school pay, and I'm just in question to why haven't I got, and it's been four years going on five. And of course, I was told many reasons why not, starting with Philip Boy, Mr. Philip Boy, who's no longer here, I know that, had emailed me back saying that it was beginning to start in 2019 when it was first, you know, originally, you know, made. He said at that time, the funding, and it will preclude because it was impossible to start the high school pay. And as time go on, it would change. Because the district added a grade level every year to the four years, 19th, 11th, and 12th. This is the fifth year, they didn't have the graduation back in June. I reached out to the NEA reps at the time, I think it was Susan Madugal, whoever, and they got with, that's over it, Mr. Terry O'Neil, and he said what he said in terms of giving his reasons and facts. And I did it again with Mark Sauer, which is no longer with the district, last year. Terry emailed him back, of course I have it, and what his description was of the reasons why that he got with the NEA rep and the grievance rep, and all that agreed with him, and the facts remained that it was low, shorter staff, shorter students, I have less work to do, and which I don't get that one because I still got to work. I still have to work. These is his words. And he's standing on that, and I'm standing on this as being up here right now in person. I still would like my high school pay because this is a high school. He brought McClure in it. Well, to me, what McClure have to do with innovation? That's a totally different school. He went into laboring what size and all that. First, it was mentioned that it was under elementary ground square footage level when he first said it, back in with Susan Madugal. I just plead my case. You know, I deserve it, and hopefully with retroactive pay. Thank you for listening, and hope that I hear something real soon. I really do.
Mr. Cornell?
Here go the papers if...
Ms. Haywell will be able to get back in contact with you.
So I just keep these?
You can bring it up. Okay, well. Okay, so, we will move on. Did Ms. Tawana Moore come back in? And I have two that have been submitted. I'll start with the first one, and this is from Kathy Jamison. I ask as a paraprofessional at CKM, I'm appalled at the behavior and the students and some of the parents. The students are so far out of control, it's unbelievable. They curse one another out all day, they call one another BIT and NIG all day long. They are very disrespectful to the teachers and all staff. The teachers and administrative staff spend the majority of the day putting out little fires all over the school with multiple students. In addition, the rules set in place to make the students better, such as no phones, no hoodies, as much as we all try to keep these rules in effect, the students don't put their phones in the yonder pouches upon arrival, and all day you're reminding the students to take the hoodies off. There will be more learning without the phones and hoodies. All the students want to be cool and to do what the popular students are doing. Therefore, all day, the mobile support team is being called room after room to get students' phones that are refusing to put it away, to break up a fight, or just escort an uncooperative student to ISS. A lot of students like going to ISS. There's definitely not enough parent participation. The students are not following the simple directions. For example, I was in the hallway just a moment ago and was asking students to take their hoodies down. By the way, by the way, there were only a few students walking around with them. One student in particular kept saying, okay, but we're walking in the same direction, and he never put it down. He kept walking. I went around the corner, and a student running down the hall ran into me. And a student just before him was running down the hall and was asked to stop. He did not, and turned and ran past me, again, running around the next corner. Students have been suspended and are back in school for what? They are here to socialize and do what they can't get away with at home. Excuse me for saying this, but a lot of our students need some kind of mental intervention. A couple of months ago, I was in a classroom with the students, and a young lady went ballistic about a pencil. It scared me. The teacher asked me to walk her to the ISS. She was irate. I thought she was going to blow a gasket or something. That was concerning. These outbursts happen all day throughout the day. You never know what the student's reaction is when you try to guide them in the right direction. In closing, I want to say, there are some students trying to do the right thing and follow the rules, but it's very hard for them to focus in class with all the disruptions and all the cursing and disrespect all around them all day. There is food throwing during lunch, running around the caf, chasing one another. In addition, you have the students that run- In addition, you have the students that run to the nurse all day when there's nothing wrong. I just feel like the students are being left behind. They know there aren't any consequences for their actions. Disappointed. Dr. Crawford will be getting back with her. And then the next one is Tiara Pharoah. The violence in the high school is getting out of control. What are we doing about the school violence? Why aren't parents being contacted as soon as possible after school lockdown? Notifications should be sent out immediately. It should be a designated person assigned to do this. While others are getting the things back under control. How do we get more help inside the building? And Mr. Brent Mitchell will follow back up with Tiara. And that is it for public comments, NEA.
Good evening and greetings to the Board of Education, Dr. Davis, administrators, Ferguson-Flores and NEA members and community stakeholders. We are in the month of December with only a few days left for school before our district winter break. Physical and mental health of our teachers and staff should be protected at all costs. Students constantly fighting, aggressive parents and verbal abuse from the students is taking a drastic toll on our teachers and staff and our schools. Everyone deserves a safe, I'm sorry, to feel safe in their workplace before, during, and after the school day. With parents showing up to classes unannounced, walking through the buildings without proper passes, or random citizens walking on the campus, our teachers and staff are not feeling protected. Just as there are strict processes to being admitted into the administration building, those same processes should be carried out throughout the district. Adequate lighting for all district buildings is a must. All Ferguson-Flores and staff deserve to feel safe as they are walking to and from their vehicles. Dim lighting should be replaced with bright lights that clearly illuminate their surroundings. Constant supervision in the hallways, parking lots and campuses by district security officers should be another top priority as we move through the rest of the school year. This isn't something that should only be offered through and to secondary schools, but to elementary schools as well. Easily accessible procedures that operationalize all policies so that all staff know how to handle various responsibilities and protocols in their buildings is needed. Continued audit of these procedures should be done to make sure all stakeholders are following them with fidelity. We are realizing more and more that the need for systems to be in place, not just relying on the same people to complete a task. You may or may not have noticed that as I read each paragraph, it began with the letter spelling out the word peace. To all my fellow teachers, support staff, I wish you all peace and joy throughout this well-deserved winter break. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now we will have Secretary, can you please read the disbursements?
For October, payroll, teacher and non-teacher is $10,439,244.96. Operational disbursements are $4,212,524.48 for a total of $14,651,769.44. And for November, the payroll for teacher and non-teacher is $9,560,737.65. And operational disbursements are $3,398,246.70 for a total of $12,958,984.41.
May I please get a recommendation?
Sub moved.
All in favor? Oh, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and so the next thing we have is STOCC payment for dual enrollment courses. Byron Crawford.
Okay, I apologize. I was originally told not to come up to the podium. So here I am. Okay, so recommendation, administration recommends payment for FFFSD dual enrollment, student tuition, and books at St. Louis Community College for the fall '23 semester in the amount of $50,391.12.
May I please get a motion?
Sub moved.
Second. Discussion?
I just wanted to ask, I think this is a great program and I think kids need to continue receiving it. I was just gonna say that it would be nice sometimes to know how kids are doing, right? To just know that how many kids took classes and then like how they did. Like, did they pass the classes? You know, did they persevere through? So for me personally, I would just like to know a little more about that at some point.
Absolutely.
All right. Call for the vote, please. We need to do a roll. Yeah, we did that.
So, individual, okay. Dr. Thur, Mr. Tyson? Dr. Martin?
Upstayed.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Assistant Secretary votes yes. Dr. Paul Walker?
Yes.
Dr. Graves?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you so much, Byron.
Thank you.
All right, we have the calendar first reading from Dr. Jana Haywood. And this is for board information.
Good evening. Policy 2012 mandates that the board receive a draft copy of the district calendar for the ensuing year prior to January 1st. The calendar committee recommends the attached draft calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. The calendar is presented as a first reading to the Board of Education. Following FFNEA and FFFSD negotiations this spring, this calendar will be brought back to the Board of Education in its final form for consideration as a second reading and final approval.
May I get a motion? Oh, this is reading. I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
We do have a question, though.
Yes.
I've had a chance to look at it as I'm interested in the calendar. One of the things I would like us to consider is being done with students by Memorial Day. Even if teachers have to come back those two days after for Records Day. I see there's two extra days, second semester. I just think dragging it out past that is certainly an issue. So if there's, I know we have plenty of hours in there based on what you presented. So as you consider a final recommendation, either teachers end or both students and teachers end by Memorial Day. I think it's important for them not to come back for a day and a half after Memorial Day if possible. So that's my only thought on that.
Okay, noted.
Anybody else? All righty, thank you so much, Dr. Haywood.
Thank you.
Next, we will have competency-based learning with Dr. Charles Pearson and Tamoya Rose Watson. And this is for board action.
Good evening, community admin, the board. I have with me Dr. Canaemia with me. Thank you, from EdPlus, who's in support of our work through community work. So what I'd like to start with today is presenting a quick video of an overview of what competency-based learning is from the point of view of Missouri.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of February. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at what's known as competency-based education. The idea that students should advance in their education based on their mastery of skills and expectations, not based on seat time. A new statewide group called the Success Ready Students Work Group is studying the issue here in Missouri. That group is made up of educators, school board members, administrators, parents, and other stakeholders. One of the facilitators of the group is Dr. Pam Hedgepath. And she tells us competency-based learning meets the individual needs of students.
So competency-based learning is really centered on student learning. And it is an ongoing process of having really clear learning targets. And then students and teachers and parents using assessment tools to really identify where the student learning is. And then where student learning is, then designing instructional practices that really meet the individual needs of students. It's highly motivating for students. It keeps parents and teachers and students very informed on where the current learning level is so that the learning can be scaffold and supported to really meet the individual needs of students.
Another facilitator for the project is Dr. Mike Fulton. He tells us the goal of the group is to develop a framework for the use of competency-based learning in Missouri.
As part of that framework, redesign the current state assessment system, including the MAP test, to better support students, educators, and inform parents on where their child is on their learning continuum and support them in their growth toward being college, career, and workplace-ready. We also are gonna have a component of this work that will speak to the need for flexibility by school districts who want to innovate in this space of competency-based learning and assessment.
The Success Ready Students Work Group will be holding a series of meetings during the coming weeks with the goal of having a framework developed by early May. We will be keeping you informed about this group's progress.
Obviously, this work is not new for Ferg Floor. We have been on this journey for quite some time through the creation of Innovation High School, through our work with standards-based learning, scales for K through 5 teachers, through our SIPs program, project-based learning. And students and teachers are receiving continued professional development around this work over the years as we're supporting project-based learning and the ways that we're using assessments to differentiate its support for students. Today, what we'd like to do is continue in that work by joining a network of districts, local districts who are also in this learning journey. The essence of this work is to redesign and reimagine assessments and accountability practices, place students' learning at the center to ensure that every child can master and apply the knowledge, skills, dispositions they need to be in high school, college, career, and workplace-ready. This work includes participation in the federal waiver summarized below in the board, the board work, which will allow for innovation towards competency-based learning. Participation in the Success Ready Students Network System Design Zone Demonstration Project includes research work and data work that will be working alongside Marzano Research Firm to do. So for tonight, the administration recommends the board approve a resolution that authorizes the Board of Education of Ferguson-Flores and School District to participate in the Success Ready Students Network System Design Zone Demonstration Project with the federal waiver request.
May I please get a motion?
Sub moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, the next thing on our agenda is the fiscal '23 annual audit. Ms. Cindy?
I'm looking for my auditor. He texted me he was here.
I think I saw him this way when I went to the.
I don't know what he's wearing.
Yeah, I would say, I think he went that way.
Uh-oh.
So I'll go ahead, and he'll do the presentation. So it is honestly my sincere pleasure to bring the audit to you this month of December, so huge success. I'll read the introduction and then hopefully Andrew will be here for his presentation. Our auditors from Clifton-Larson Allen LLP will present the audit report for the 2022-2023 fiscal year and address associated questions. The district is receiving an unqualified opinion for the fiscal year. This audit opinion states, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the respective cash basis financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information of the Ferguson Reorganized School District R2 as of June 30, 2023. In addition, the district is required to publish a financial report showing a summary of receipts and expenditures for the year. And I was hoping he'd be here by now. Do you want me to go ahead and read the recommendation and then when he comes, so you can just do the presentation? Okay. So administration recommends that the board approve the audit report for fiscal year 2022-23 as submitted by Clifton-Larson Allen LLP and publish the summary of receipts and expenditures in a local newspaper. And at this time, I would like to introduce Andrew Zabel when he gets here.
I'm gonna go ahead and ask for the motion now, though, because I don't want to. And then even you can have discussions throughout. So may I please get a motion?
Sub moved to approve the audit presented.
Second.
All righty, and here he is.
I've already introduced him.
Okay, I apologize about that. So my name's Andrew Zabel. I'm the principal of Clifton-Larson Allen. This is our third year that we've done the audit for Ferguson-Flores and School District. I'm basically gonna run through the results of this, but this is actually gonna be compared to prior periods and prior years. I think we have some positive results and positive outcomes. You should be thanking this person behind me. So the scope of our audit work is the financial statements. It's consistent with prior periods. In addition to that, we're covering an examination report of Missouri laws specific to attendance and transportation. In addition to that, we issue a report on compliance related to a single audit and internal controls over financial reporting. We have issued our report. We have issued an unmodified opinion. That's the cleanest possible opinion an organization can receive. We have had no findings. In prior periods, we have had findings specifically to the timeliness of bank reconciliations and the completeness and accuracy of that. The bank reconciliations tie out. Cash is recorded properly. Things were completed timely. I know I want to see our audit went 10 times smoother and that's why I'm sitting here and putting to you, presenting to you much earlier than prior years. Perfect. So like I mentioned, there's no findings to report. I just want to reiterate the improvements that we've seen from the prior year, so overall improved responsiveness. The corrective actions have been taken specific to account reconciliations and overall timeliness. If you remember, in prior years, I presented in May of last year and even as late as June of last year. This is important, the timeliness of getting these done. That ensures you get your financials and cash and proceeds from the state of Missouri timely. I'm gonna cover some quick financial highlights. Cash in that position increased $895,000 compared to the prior year. Some of that's really due to the timing of ESAR reimbursements. Net position is $33.61. Um, net position, um, is thirty-three point six million, um, of which twenty-four point four seven is unrestricted. What that means is Ferguson, Florissant has a grid-strong financial position. Um, revenue increased by eight point four million, four point nine five million of increase in related expenditures from the prior year. Again, that's timing of ESER reimbursements. So some other required communications. Overall, like I said, great cooperation and working with Cindy and her team. We did have some written communications specific to attendance and transportation. These were, the transportation item was very de minimis and small, so it's not an item of significance. The issue related to attendance was related to Griffin, um, Elementary School, specific to sign-in and sign-out sheets. When we do our testing over attendance, we look at sign-in and sign-out sheets to make sure that students that leave prematurely are properly tracked and recorded within the attendance records. Um, overall, that didn't, wasn't significant enough in the attendance population at Griffin, wouldn't require a modification to our Missouri Examination Report, which is why we simply just gave an observations and, uh, not a finding to the management team. That is my presentation, I'm sure. I'm gonna have some questions, though.
I do have a question. I gave Cindy heads up. You started expanding it. I'm just curious about the attendance piece and transportation piece. How many schools did you test for attendance? What was the main, like, recommendation? And have we implemented that recommendation to ensure that we don't have that issue moving forward?
So we, we tested ten, and Griffin was the only one that we had issues with from sign-in and sign-out sheet perspective.
You mean decided to sign out for kids, like, signing in and signing out?
Correct, and then we wanna make sure that the attendance records matches what's reported to DESI. And specific to the corrective actions. Cindy can speak to those.
So one of the things, I'm working with Ryan Deem, uh, to work with the attendance, uh, office professionals at the, at all of the schools to make sure that we have solid documentation, um, col- uh, not, what's the word? I'm, I'm asking Ryan to kinda be the, the keeper of all those supporting documentation, so he works with the attendance secretaries on a monthly basis, making sure that they submit the proper documentation to him so that we have all that on file for when the auditors come.
Thank you. Is there, have we thought of doing it digital, so we have, so we're not depending on paper being lost or not, but something digital signing in, so we have a timestamp, and there's no questions about it?
I'm not sure about that, is, uh, with the new Infinite Campus system.
I'm saying we think a Google Form or something when someone, a kid signs in at a school or something like that.
I think some schools are doing like a Google Form when kids come in, 'cause I, I think what I learned was that some office attend- off, attendance office professionals might sit and watch the kids sign in and stuff and everything, but then they have to go back and record it in Infinite, or in Tyler SIS. And so, um, I, I think there's some of that being done, but I, I, there's probably efficiencies that can be gained, I think, but I'm not entirely sure about the process.
Sure, we're getting consistency to make sure to have that issue again, 'cause obviously every minute matters in attendance. And what was the transportation issue specifically? I know Cindy gave me a little background, but I know others might ask about it as well for the transportation issue.
So we actually ha- um, transport some of our students via cabs, external transportation. And so getting the documentation from those, uh, vendors and then properly making sure that we know the riders, the addresses, how many miles they are so that, um, our transportation department can properly report that information on the application of transportation aid is very important. We had one vendor, when they gave us the information, we didn't have all the student numbers, and so we had to go back and forth and back and forth with them on trying to reconcile and everything. And so we just, we've, we've already had a, a meeting with Transportation and Mr. O'Neill and, um, uh, the individuals over McKinney-Vento and students in transition to try to improve the, the process of working with the cabs. Um, I know what, one of the challenges our, our buildings have is, um, the cabs aren't, like, they can't route within like twenty-four hours, right? It takes time, and so just trying to work with them and trying to make sure that we've got all the proper procedures and information being reported from them so that we can properly report it to the auditors is what we're working on.
Good work again, getting it done on time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, it also matters for, um, points.
Yes.
Did anyone else have any questions for Cindy? Job well done. Um, can we call for the vote?
Yes, sorry.
No, we can do all in favor. Everybody good? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, can we clap it up for Cindy? And, um, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Davis.
So, um, I'm gonna actually sing a song, no, I'm just joking. Before we dismiss, um, I wanted to take an opportunity to recognize one of our team members who is out sick tonight, um, but this would have been her last board meeting. Um, Dr. Adrian Bland is retiring December thirty-first. Uh, she's spent her, most of her career here in Ferguson, Florissant. When I came here in twenty fifteen, uh, she was already on, on the cabinet team and just has done an amazing job, her thirty-one years in public education, uh, most of it being right here in Ferguson, Florissant. Um, she is a staunch advocate for children, uh, very meticulous, um, and unassuming, because when you talk to Adrian, she has a very light voice, but she's packed with power. Uh, very thoughtful and has just done an amazing job. Um, and I wouldn't let this moment go by without publicly saying that I am grateful for the service that she's provided to Ferguson, Florissant. Uh, more, um, she's just been a great thought partner in the work itself, um, and someone who loves children. So if you would join me in celebrating Dr. Adrian Bland on her thirty-one years of service. And Adrian, I know you, Adrian, I know you're not here, but, um, I'm sure you're watching us online. I don't know if I'm talking to her in heaven. But I just wanted to say how, how grateful we are for you, so thank you. Yes, also, um, as we, uh, before we close, um, I, I wanted to say this. Um, I think the sort of elephant in the room are the fights that we've been having in our district. Um, I had a, actually did an interview right before the board meeting with channel, I think it was channel four, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and I said to them then, I'll say now publicly, that, um, we have a huge responsibility to address these issues. Uh, we've put a lot of things in place. Um, it's gonna take the work of the administration, as well as our community, uh, to deal with this issue. Um, I can tell you that our children are going through a lot. Our schools are being stressed, our teachers are being stressed. Um, and so Monday night, um, is my advisory council meeting. We had one in November, went a long time, was a good meeting. Our next one is Monday. We're gonna use that agenda. Uh, I've invited, when I was on the news earlier, I invited the community to come out, and it's gonna be in this room. I don't know how many folks will be here, um, but what I will say is that it's gonna take us working together. I'm not running from the issue at all. In fact, every time there's been an issue, um, you know, if I'm not at the school or talking to the principal or trying to figure out how and what we do next, uh, then it's, you know, let's bring our community together. You know, we have, I've met with principals last week when I was doing some of their check-ins, talking specifically about, I specifically had a conversation just last evening with, uh, Mr. Williams at North, as well as Mr. Melendez at McClure about this very issue. Um, I sent out a letter last night to the community specifically acknowledging there's a problem. Uh, while our data is better in terms of the numbers of fights we've had across our district, uh, this uptick cannot continue. I wanna say this, and I'll say it Monday night, too. Um, your Ferg Flor has been in the news. Uh, I've been in Jeff City at hearings because of suspensions. Um, and sometimes it feels from my end like a double-edged sword, but we've gotta do something different. Um, having been a principal for years myself, parents want children safe, they want, all of them. Uh, teachers wanna work in a place that's safe, um, and less stress. Um, and I can tell you that, you know, we're, I see a cliff, and I don't wanna wait until we get there. So Monday night, I invite you to come. Um, we're gonna, you know, collaborate. And how I define collaboration is walking in a room without an answer and leaving with one. And so I encourage you, folks in the community, those out there in TV land, come and join us, and let's figure it out together. Uh, what I can tell you is that, um, all of us need to be held accountable, myself and parents. Um, you know, when we have parents coming to school fighting kids, that's an issue, y'all. Um, so let's call it out. Um, when we have folks coming to school, ninety-five percent of our students come to school and do what they're supposed to do, but the five percent have turned it upside down. And it's gotta stop, and I'll be the first in line. And, you know, and I'm saying it now publicly, you can criticize however you want, um, but we've gotta take this back. And it's gonna take us working together. I can put them out. The principals can put them out, but kids are gonna come back. And so we gotta deal with the root issues, the root cause. Why, why are kids fighting? What is happening in our schools? Uh, it's mostly secondary. We got some issues at the primary levels, too, uh, but most of these issues we've been having have been at the secondary schools. We had a different fight today at Restoration. So let's, let's, let's just call it out. Uh, let's come together and figure it out. I did a clarion call when I was on the news earlier, asking for our dads, whether you in the home or not. I need fathers. I need folks in our community taking responsibility for our children. So Monday night, we'll be here, start set six, and, um, you know, last time we said, you know, go to six or seven, we were here to eight forty-five. If we're here to midnight, let's, I, I, I need your help. I need the community's help. Uh, I'm gonna stand there with the board has asked me to do, the board is supporting. Uh, but it's gonna take our community to take ownership of our children and then to figure out what the best solutions are to help them with these issues, 'cause they're deeper than just suspending. Uh, so I wanted to say that. Put it on your calendar for Monday, December eighteenth, at six P M, right here in this boardroom. Thank you.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn to close?
Sub move.
Second.
Uh, call for the vote, please?
Yes. Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Assistant Secretary votes yes. Dr. Powell Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Tyson? And Dr. Graves?
Yes, thank you guys so much. Happy holidays. Um, wishing you well. Yeah, wishing you well, wishing you well, wishing you peace, love, joy, and happiness.